Good evening, everyone. I will call the Dublin City Council Meeting on Monday, March the 19th to order. Judy, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Amros Grims.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Mr. Rosa.
Here.
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Christina, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I see in our special recognitions and presentations a good friend of mine, Mike Shattuck, on behalf of the city of Columbus. Michael, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time and having me here tonight. As a former recovering city council member, remember Arlington, I want to...
You're recovering?
Yeah, well, I'm trying. It's a long process, but I appreciate your service to Dublin and to our region. I work with Mayor Ginther, and my job is to find ways to collaborate and cooperate with our suburban partners. Mayor Ginther believes what's good for Dublin is ultimately good for Columbus and vice versa. The stronger you are, the stronger the region, and the better for Columbus and vice versa. So, we've had some great experiences so far in the last two years, and look forward to the future working together. I gave cards to everybody. My personal cellphone is on there, too, so if you ever have any issues or there's any questions or ways that we can be helpful, please call me, and looking forward to working with all of you. So, thanks for having me.
You know, Mike, one thing I can say about Mike is his offer is genuinely sincere. I know that you were, as you said, on city council in Upper Arlington, so you have sort of a soft spot for us, northwest corner of the community here. And right after Mayor Ginther was elected, you and he came up here, and Dana and I sat in our chambers and talked through our common issues. And I know the hand of friendship is sincere, and we greatly appreciate him and your efforts, and you stopping in, and you are always welcome here.
Thank you, Mayor.
And if there's anything we can do to help you, please just let us know.
I appreciate that.
Does anybody have any questions for Mike?
No.
Okay. Thanks again for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope to see you at the memorial tournament.
Absolutely. I'll be there. Thank you.
David, you making your way to the podium? This is John's baby, the Dublin Arts Council.
Yeah, we have other board and staff here, so...
Do you want to introduce them?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Please do.
Sure. So, in the back row, we have Jack Pigman, Jenna Cooper, who's our Director of Engagement, Claudia Plumley, Kay Yamakawa, and Brian Fowler. So, they're all here.
Great. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you so much for coming and what you do for us.
So, thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk this evening. I deeply appreciate the support of city council and city staff in all that we do. Tonight's presentation highlights eight key trends in the arts today, demonstrating that Dublin is leading the way with programming and community development initiatives that provide best-in-class cultural experiences for those who live, work, play, and learn in Dublin. On behalf of the Dublin Arts Council Board and Staff, I thank Dublin City Council for its continued investment in the arts and culture in our community. With your foresight and support, we've been able to add recognition for Dublin as an arts leader to its growing global reputation as a world-class community. Dublin Arts Council celebrates its 35th anniversary this year, and the board and the staff and I are committed to our mission, which is to engage the community, cultivate creativity, and foster lifelong learning through the arts. As thought leaders, DAC is at the forefront of U.S. arts and cultural trends. Dublin truly demonstrates leadership and maintains relevance in the cultural arena. Richard Florida named Dublin, Ohio, as one of the U.S.'s top 20 creative class cities, the only city not on the east or west coast, thanks to the artists, designers, companies such as Fuse, OCLC, Roto, and all the creative class businesses that call Dublin home. So, I thought we'd review a few trends in the industry. So, using technology to engage and measure participation and impact. Dublin Arts Council has been using apps, GPS technology, cellphones, and augmented reality since 2010 to measure art and public places' interaction. We have employed augmented reality in the gallery to help artists tell their story. Major player in the Pokemon Go app as a result of gaming and GPS mapping. We've increased visitors to Dublin Art Center and our entire public art collection. We are included in the Culture Now app and part of the Public Art Archive. We're the first public art tour in the state of Ohio on these international databases. We have a GPS-enabled collection. DAC is award-winning. We received the Groundworks Group Using Technology to Deliver on Mission Award in 2015. We continue to extend our reach. Our cell tour participants are from all 50 states and Canada, and our River Box participants are logged in from 12 countries. In 2017, DAC and the Dublin Art in Public Places program received the prestigious Spotlight Dublin Award from the Dublin Chamber of Commerce for bringing positive national and international attention to the community. Support for community art-making builds constituents invested in the organization and the community. Dublin Arts Council has been working on cross-generational programming for many years with the incorporation of public art in two pedestrian tunnels and a number of yarn-storming projects in various locations. Through community art-making and volunteering, the community completed tunnels at Bailey Elementary and the Emerald Parkway Tunnel with Dublin City Schools. We're working on yarn-storming projects with 10 senior living facilities. Olga Zimmska, our latest public artist, initiated reclaiming tree branches for Feather Point, our current public artwork in Kajushko Park. We further art-making opportunities through camps, classes, and workshops for ages 6 through 18. And we continue to offer the community arts grants to further support artists, arts organizations, and grow the creative economy. Sorry, a lot of paper. The third trend: national focus on equity and inclusion, building community through the arts. Our Bread Festival is a perfect example of Dublin Arts Council's focus on equity and inclusion. It began with an identified community need. One in six residents are born outside of the U.S., and over 60 languages are spoken in Dublin City Schools. We developed authentically with rather than for the community. The cultural representation on the planning committee drives the festival development. In 2017, cultural community booths represented eight countries. Attendance estimates doubled from year one to year two, necessitating a move to Kaufman Park for year three. Trend four: evolve arts experiences from simply attend to participate, experience, and engage. Our Visual Arts Series program, roughly eight exhibitions per year, is a great example. We incorporate interactive components, a video feedback booth, augmented reality, mapping, posting, apps, and smartphone in collaboration with Advanced Computing Center for the Arts and Design at the Ohio State University. In recognition of such programming, 2017 City Scene Magazine wrote, "Readers voted DAC the best of the bust, the best suburban art gallery." Oops. We missed...we skipped a trend here. Did I skip a trend?
I think you're on trend five. I think you skipped four.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Participatory museum.
There you go.
Oh, participatory museum.
There you go.
Well, you read it. You just didn't have a slide. You're...
Oh, okay. Great. Thanks.
You're on five now.
Sorry.
That's okay. We can Photoshop this all together, Dave. Don't worry.
Yeah, good. Please do. Please edit, as Ed will.
It'll be fine.
Providing multifaceted offerings so guests can curate their own experience. The Sundays at Sayota Concert Series is a perfect example. Social experiences with friends, neighbors, kids, and pets. Relaxing Sunday evenings before the work week begins again. Food and beverage offerings provided when people pack a picnic dinner. It's a natural amphitheater with green grass, shade trees, and the river. There's music of different genres each week. There's also the Leather Lips public art sculpture on the property and two River Boxes on site, so you have a virtual and real-time tour of the public art collection. We provide a kayak to the concert. Trend number six: social justice-focused programming. Dublin Arts Council has been addressing social issues through art since 2011, shifting perspectives with the Down Syndrome community, where people can see the person as opposed to the condition. Eddie Adams Vietnam, where veterans' issues were addressed. Hatred Doesn't Work sculptures and stories of Alfred Tibor combating bullying and fostering acceptance. The exhibitions tackling immigration, integration, and identity. Crossing Borders opens May 1st, which addresses immigration. There are cross-disciplinary offerings of film, poetry, photography, and sculpture. And of course, our community collaborators: Dublin City Schools, Dublin branch of the Columbus Metropolitan Library, Centaro, Ohio Department of Veterans Affairs, Columbus Refugee and Immigration Services, the Somali Students Association, Down Syndrome Association of Central Ohio, to just name a few. The seventh trend is understanding relevance through mission-based programming, and an example of this is our River Box program. It began with informed concept from the biennial Dublin Community Survey, where residents expressed great interest in river access and the environment. We tested the idea where geocaching meets public art against mission. We looked for partners and funding opportunities such as Honda North America and Swayco. We executed and evaluated. Now, up to 20,000 interactions are logged annually since 2010. Participation data is reported by the city of Dublin to the EPA annually as evidence of water quality education. DAC was recently named a top 1% geocacher in the United States of 450,000 cashers. We were selected for a program presentation at international conferences in New Zealand, Scotland, and Tasmania. Now, we refine and repeat. We added a cash-in, trash-out program, started challenges based on hobbyist offers to help further develop the program, and we grew from six to 16 artist-created public artworks. Trend eight is creative placemaking. Dublin Arts Council is now leading the charge in planning and leadership for converting public spaces into places with meaning, identity, and authenticity. The Sense of Place community research started in 2012 and ended in 2014. Cultural visioning workshops and charrettes in 2015. We created and executed Bridging Time, the Historic Dublin Bridge Park Collaborative Event in 2016. We convened a 42-member Cultural District Stakeholder Steering Committee organized in 2016. Steering Committees included Dublin City Schools, the CVB, developers, HDBA, Bridge Park Businesses, city staff, artists, the library, CSAC, and more. The Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau Strategic Alliance Promotional Subcommittee was created as an outcome in 2017. So, I included in your packet a return-on-investment document that's an infographic, but just to walk you through it. So, we receive 25% of the hotel motel tax, and then 10% of this endowment is returned to the city to pay down the bonds on the building at 7125 Riverside Drive. 9.4% are set aside for public art commissions, and then each remaining programming dollar is increased by 68 cents through other support, through grants and sponsorships. An estimated economic value nearly 2.5 times the bed tax program investment. So, in conclusion, in the February 23rd, 2018, New York Times article, "How Do You Choose a Suburb?", Artsy was mentioned as the first attribute for families moving from a city to a suburb. Looking for the least suburban of suburbs, buyers were looking for culture along with available housing stock. Residents of a featured suburb said their choice was driven by inspired commitment to building community. The Knight Foundation researched 26 cities across the country, and in their report, Soul of the Community, found three universal and important factors when attaching residents closely to their community. Number one was aesthetics. Maintain and promote offerings in parks, playgrounds, and trails to increase community pride. Number two was social offerings, availability of arts and cultural opportunities and social community events. The authors recommended further investment in these areas of clear value to residents to help communities achieve higher levels of attachment. Openness. Active and visible efforts to promote tolerance and diversity within communities increase desire to stay in a community and recommend it to others. So, I'm honored to provide this update about how Dublin Arts Council provides good stewardship and return-on-investment for our hotel motel tax dollars invested by the city of Dublin, and how the organization delivers on its mission to engage the community, cultivate creativity, and foster lifelong learning through the arts. So, please join us for our upcoming events. Crossing Borders Exhibition opens May 1st. The Screening of Breathe Free, the documentary that accompanies the exhibition, opens May 10th at the Abbey Theater. Yarn Over Dublin and Bridge Park from June 9th through July 9th. Sundays at Sayota Concert Series, June 10th through July 29th. Camps and Classes, June 11th through August 10th, and Bread, October 14th. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you very much, David. You know, the arts and this community's commitment to the arts and the quality of programming that you and your folks do is one of the things that sets Dublin apart from other communities. And I just noted, in every single one of your trends, it wasn't necessarily about art. It was the community and all of the people interacting around the art, which is really just fascinating to watch. So, thank you so much for everything that you do. Anybody? John, anything?
I just want to say, we are really fortunate to have probably the most advanced arts council in the region. Dave, you and your credibly hard-working staff and board bridge the gap for everybody in our community, the seniors, the children. You've worked out so many different projects. You're like the energized bunny rabbit. You guys are always into something and working really hard and involving everybody in the community across the board. It's just been amazing, and it's been a pleasure these years to be on your committee, to work with the staff, and just the excitement. There's such positive energy with this particular group and what they do. It's amazing. And they're fun. It's a fun group.
It is a fun group.
It's just a great group because their minds are always going, and they're always going in the right place, and they're always doing something for the community. As the mayor said, you guys are out there, and you do us proud, so thank you very much.
Thank you, John, for all your...
So, how big is your staff?
We have five on our staff.
Five.
Five total.
You know, what was amazing to me when I looked at the list of all of the trends that, you know, for a staff of five, you guys are doing what education and businesses are trying to do, too. Leverage technology, placemaking, be inclusive, create participation, create relevant experiences, and measure it. And, you know, there's organizations that are thousands that can't pull that off. So, I mean, that is mind-blowing to me.
Thank you.
So, we might cut back your staff.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're overstaffed.
There goes our bed tax.
That is just incredible. So, the lessons are certainly going to benefit all of us because everybody's trying to do...
Yes.
All of these trends that you're doing. So, congratulations. That's fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Mike?
Angel, do you know when the...those bonds will be paid off? I know it's been some time ago.
2020.
So, it's coming around pretty quick.
Yes.
Wow.
So, I see Jack Pigman back there. You were on board when we did the original lease with...for the building there, the Jelby Mansion, as I recall, some time ago. Good. Those are almost satisfied.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, David. Thanks for coming in. Citizen comments. I don't have a list of anyone that signed in, but is there anyone that didn't know they needed to or would like to raise their hand at this point? You can come forward. You can talk about whatever you want for five minutes. You know, one of the things I enjoy the most about our community is how often, when I go around, I can turn the corner and bump into an old friend. And that happened when I came into council chambers tonight. Sauce Code Spodis back there. Sauce, I just wanted to say thanks for what you've done for this community. You've been a tireless, active person in the Dublin community for I don't even know how long, but it's great to see you. Thanks for coming in.
Mayor, does Sauce...do you want to say anything about the upcoming Italian festival?
Come on, Sauce. I said I'm going to get you the podium.
We're going to give you a plug. Would you just want to...it's exciting. It's going to be something new for our city.
Well, you know, we get along now. In the old days, we are Italian. We've made amends. And we do. We have...thanks to Allison, Lori Getchell, and a lot of other people. And we've met twice already with everybody that has a part in this. We do have an Italian Heritage Summer Festival planned in July, July 13th, 14th, and 15th, and it truly will be a heritage festival with some great entertainment, wine and peaches. You know, it's an old Italian tradition. Very few festivals you go to, and you can get wine and peaches. You know, you just put a piece of peach in a glass of wine, and then after you finish your wine, you eat the peach. So, you got to stop by and...
It's brilliant.
Huh?
Brilliant.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, it's just...
You want to give us the dates again and the hours?
July 13th, 14th, and 15th. And I know you've heard of Ray Massa and the Eurorhythms. I hope you have. Ray's heading up the entertainment and bringing entertainment in, and they're a great...probably the best Italian band in the land, and they play at a lot of Italian festivals across the country. They actually go to Italy a couple...well, every couple of years and play for a couple of weeks. So, they're a great band. They really are. We just had them Saturday night for St. Joseph's Table Celebration.
And this is going to be located where at?
The festival?
Yes, the festival.
Oh, Kaufman Park.
Okay.
We're only using, what, eight acres? Yeah, it's over here. I'm...I...we're using six acres.
As a...I was going to say, as a full-blooded Italian myself, I'm finally going to feel comfortable at a festival.
Well, here, let me give you a card so you can get on the website.
I've already read...I've already been on your website. I saw it's great.
Download an application to join?
Well, I will. I will. Absolutely.
And we do do a lot of things in the community as well. I mean, we don't just...we're not just social, okay? Although, we do have a social once a month. But, you know, I saw you had the Down Syndrome of Central Ohio Association. We have a golf outing, August 18th, at the Golf Club of Dublin, and all those proceeds go to the Down Syndrome Association of Central Ohio. And the first two years, they actually went to the Down Syndrome Unit Children's Hospital for the kids, but it didn't...you know, they just didn't really pan out for them for some reason. I don't know. But my son's involved with the Central Ohio Down Syndrome, and he got us hooked up, and they're really, really excited. And we're doing that through our foundation, so hopefully we'll make some money for them.
Okay, great.
Fantastic. It's always great to see you, Sauce.
Thank you. Great. Great to see you.
Is that the goal of this festival, to raise some funds?
In fact, I can say in Italian, come and bello di benedetto.
Exactly. Easy for you to say.
That means good to see you all again.
Is that the goal of this festival, to raise some funds for those charities that you support as well?
Part of it is, yeah, through the foundation, although most of the festivals through the sons and daughters of Italy and America. The goal there is to raise some funds and down the road, be able to get a building in Dublin for our group, because right now we don't have a place we call our own. And that's what...and we've been around here for 30 years, but nationally, we've been around since 1905. So, it's an old organization, you know? We're trying to bring some Italian spirit back.
There you go. Great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
It's great to see you.
Great. Knows how to get a hold of me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of March the 12th. Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes as they're currently constituted? Hearing none, I will make a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Judy?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grims.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing ordinances. All three of these pieces of legislation are land appropriations for construction of the Highland Croix Roundabout. I moved away of the rules of order regarding reading by title only and have the names and addresses of the property owners read into the record. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christina. Judy?
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan. Vice Mayor Amros Grims.
Yes.
And Judy, could you please read the names and addresses of those three property owners?
London to Ellen O'Brien, 9635 Highland Croix Road. Kevin Caldwell-Horsefield, 7848 McPatrick Road. The Board of Park Commissioners of the Columbus and Franklin County Metropolitan Park District for property located along Highland Croix Road.
Thank you, Judy. Megan, hi.
Good evening, members of council. There are no changes with these ordinances. We would like to, once again, thank the Metro Parks for their donation of the property interests that are necessary for this project. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We recommend approval.
Questions from council?
I had just one I forgot to ask last time. It's not in the five-year CIP, but any idea of when it might fall into a CIP slaughter? Are we looking at, you know, if we were six or seven years out, would this likely be included, or do you think it's...your estimation it's farther than that?
Um, I would think it could be within that timeframe. It really depends on the projects that are proposed as part of the CIP update each year, so we'll be having that conversation in the next few months.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Judy?
Vice Mayor Amros Grims.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Introduction, public hearing resolutions. Resolution 14-18, Judy?
Appointing members to the various boards and commissions of the city of Dublin.
Chris?
Yes. Well, we have some folks to congratulate. We've got some outstanding...we had a lot of outstanding folks coming to interview, and we certainly had more than ample selection. But we have several folks to appoint by resolution this evening, and you want me to read through all of them, Judy?
Sure.
Okay. We will appoint William Wilson to the Planning and Zoning Commission to a term that expires March 31st, '22. Gary Alexander to the Architectural Review Board for a term that expires March 31st, 2021. Frank Wilson to the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau, a term that expires March 31st, 2021. David Reed is here with us this evening for our Code Advisory Panel for a term expires March 31st, 2021. Martha Cooper to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term that expires March 31st, 2021. Jason Deschler to a term for Board of Zoning Appeals, also expires March 31st, 2021. Elizabeth McLean to the Community Service Advisory Commission. Her term will expire March 31st, 2021. Steve Dritz, who joined us here this evening as well, to the Community Service Advisory Commission, it too expires March 31st, 2021. Mark Stem for the Personnel Board of Review, it expires March 31st, 2021. William Root and Dale Saylor to the Tax Board of Review. Those expire March 31st of 2020. Clay Rose will be the city manager's representative to the Tax Board of Review. That body serves at the pleasure of the city manager. Julia Caruso will be reappointed to a two-year term on the Dublin Arts Council, and her term will expire March 31st, 2020. Each of the folks will serve until a successor is appointed or until death, resignation, or removal for cause determined by city council. Oh, yeah, right. Andy's not on here. We did appoint Andy Keeler to the Architectural Review Board, and I'm not sure exactly offhand where that...the date that that term expires. Is it 21? He is not on this resolution, Judy, so the...
Andrew Keeler is in section two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip over it? Oh, okay, the second line there. Apologize. Andrew Keeler, Architectural Review Board, March 31st, 2021. And then, this resolution is effective upon passage, provided under 4.04 of the revised charter. And that is my motion, I believe, and I'll need a second.
I will second that motion. Is there any discussion from council? Anybody want to say anything about all that?
Do you want to amend the resolution that you...
No, I skipped it. It's there.
Okay.
That was on me.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jane.
I just want to say that we had so many applicants for all of our committees that I, if they're watching tonight or listening, that we are so thankful that we have so many people that are interested in serving on committees. It was very difficult to choose to have that many people come and ask to participate. So, this community is amazing. So, we thank them for that.
And I think an important point, Jane, about that is when we're looking at the whole body of the board, sometimes two or three people that just interviewed have kind of the same characteristics, and we need a different characteristic given the mix of people we have. So, the fact that someone didn't get appointed isn't in no way a...any kind of a negative towards them. It's just that there was maybe somebody else that satisfied a particular skill or need that we didn't have, that we needed to try to take care of. So, excellent point, Jane. Anybody else? Judy?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grims.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Under the other portion of the agenda, requests for alcohol waivers for the Forfest and the Ente... and the Italian Heritage Summer Festival, Allison.
Good evening, members of council. I have two separate events. Both of them are new, although the ForFest is sort of a recreation of event that we had during the President's Cup. But we do recommend both of these. We've been working quite extensively, I think, with the ForFest for about a year. We've probably been talking. And with the Italian Festival, I think we've been talking for almost two years now, Sauce. So we've had lots of conversations with both of them. We recommend approving both of their requests. The ForFest will actually be on Bridge Park Avenue and Long Shore, right at that corner there in the middle. It's great since we don't have to close any through roads. So it makes it, if those of you around last time, we closed Bridge and High. So this will make far less a difference to the surrounding traffic. And then the Italian Festival will actually be in the south end of Coffman Park. So over, you'll go over the bridge, so everything, kind of what we call the Celtic Rock Field during Irish Festival. So I'll take any questions, or we have Ted Orr from Bridge, or from Crawford-Hoying, and you met Sauce earlier, but he can come back too, if you have any questions.
You know, Allison, what's interesting is, and a lot of people have brought this up and we've talked about it, is, you know, using Bridge Street as, as a place to have gatherings and parties. And it's, and this is gonna be like our first prototype. And the parking garages, the way we laid it out with Crawford-Hoying, is, it's gonna work so that the cars can still access the gar, the parking garages. And then we can have the down street area be a pedestrian mall vis a vis like you find a lot of really nice cities and in Europe. So it's gonna be our first attempt to use Bridge Street. Thank you. And use it for public gatherings in, in a pedestrian fashion. So should be a great thing. Thank you.
So to that point, all the internal streets will be closed to traffic for this, or what's the thing?
Mostly. We're, we're kind of working with the, we have our first internal full meeting, I think it's in two weeks. We have been down there with our police officers and our streets team. We really want to make sure that we almost close off as much as we think we need, because we don't want to have the pedestrians interacting with the vehicular traffic. So the main roads will be closed off. So the main stage, if you will, will be on Bridge Park. So when you're actually driving by and you look over, you'll see the stage. And Long Shore will have some staging along it, so, you know, the bathrooms, beer trucks. We're gonna use some of the park, pocket parks. So really, anything we close beyond that is just gonna be for pedestrian safety. But we're definitely having all the access from the east side of the garages, so all the garages will still be available to everybody.
Yeah, and I think to John's point, in addition to pedestrian safety, which of course is job one, but it, you know, it's a really good time to see, you know, how, how people flow and where they go and where they move and what external pocket parks and amenities that are there that they use. And I, I think it's a, a great test ground, if you will. Because I, I, like John, think, I like the European closed street experience, so that's great. Allison, I see here that you recommend approval for this. What's the criteria that we use to waive this city's policy?
There really isn't a written criteria. What happens is they have to come to our committee first. So we have an internal events committee that is made up with representatives from our staff. We have police, streets, parks, facilities, and communications. So we try to all sit down together and make an original recommendation that we think this event can go forward. And then they are still going to, neither of them have their fully approved permit yet, so they need to get permission from us before they can go to the state of Ohio to get their liquor permit from the state of Ohio.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thad, do we need to pass two of these independently? Probably? Okay. All right, I make a motion that we approve the waiver for the ForFest.
I'll second that.
Thanks, John. Judy?
Vice Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And I make a motion that we also approve the waiver for the Italian Heritage Summer Festival. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Allison.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda, comprehensive sign plan for Midwest Auto Group. Claudia?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This application came to be from an ordinance that we did in 2016 where five acres were added to the MAG campus to allow for the construction of the Land Rover and Jaguar showroom and service area, which is currently under construction and is slated to open later this year. Which on this screen, you can see it there, which is vacant on this, on this drawing. But at that time, council had asked questions regarding the signs within the campus and allowances that were included within the development text and requested that the applicant come before council for a comprehensive inventory of, of the signs. And so the applicant is slated with the opening of the Jaguar and Land Rover showroom to install signs for that particular building and needed to move forward with this application. And this was reviewed at Planning and Zoning Commission in early March and is coming to you with a recommendation of approval from them. So the signs for the campus are actually divvied up between the three subareas, Subarea A, B, and C. And with that, Subarea A essentially is the original MAG campus that was part of perimeter center in the late 90s. And we've been working with the applicant, the property owner, and their architectural consultant to really update the signs in accordance with more modern standards, as well as when additional subareas came online, we tried to make the language be very similar, but between the three, it's slightly different across the subareas. And you can kind of tell as you are inventorying this, as we did with the applicant, that Subarea A has a little bit more original standards from the late 90s, early 2000s. So in this presentation, I have tried to make it clear as to what sign allowances are. And again, the applicant has a development text that is part of the planned unit development zoning that they have in place that allows the signs that are on the campus to be there. And the majority of them have been approved through the Planning and Zoning Commission process. So across the campus, there is an allowance for a dealership sign, which is there in the center. It's the MAG sign. And it exists currently in the pond. There's like a little island along 33 there to the south. The campus ID signs, which is the tall 15-foot metal sign, there are four of those allowed to be on the campus. And three, I'm sorry, there's three. And there is two existing today and one would be permitted at the very western entry point there of Venture Drive, which was approved by the commission as part of the showroom for Jaguar and Land Rover. Directional signs across the campus are not restricted in terms of how many there are allowed to be. There are two different types of signs allowed. And these are the original ones that were installed when MAG first came to be on this site. And the black dots indicate where they are located across Subarea A. And they are somewhat unique in design to Subarea A. A second type of directional sign, which is permitted to be on the campus, is a sign that is less than three square feet and interiorly oriented, so you can't see it from any of the public streets around that. And those are mainly for the main building where service areas are below ground. And then with this inventory, we've also noted that there are two signs that are directionally in nature, but they seem very temporary. They have not have the same level of quality nor building materials that match the building. And the Jaguar Land Rover one specifically was not ever approved by the planning commission nor is it interiorly oriented. You can definitely see it from Perimeter Loop Road. So we're requesting that those be removed before the applicant moves forward with any additional signs. Wall signs in Subarea A, there is one permitted in the development text for Land Rover, which we are expecting to be removed, obviously, as now Land Rover is moving over to Subarea C. And then there is a MAG welcome sign in the original main office building that was there on the campus and we're requesting that to be removed as part of this application. Brand signs are unique to the campus specifically because there are so many different automotive brands sold across the campus. And you can see here that pretty much every single brand that is sold within Subarea A has this type of brand sign. We noted that Bentley specifically, as well as Porsche, has two of these brand signs and they're limited to one per brand. And then the Volkswagen sign has a, has a blank panel that we're also requesting to be removed. So we're requesting to have just one for Bentley, one for Porsche, and then have one for VW. Subarea B has slightly different sign allowances, but permitted here as well are wall signs, brand signs, and directional signs. If you recall, we had originally approved Audi to be not in a separate building. And when they did become a separate building, there was an allowance for a wall sign for Audi as well as for BMW and Mini. And those are all permitted to be at a 15-foot height, which is typically what code would allow. And they are installed per the approved plans from Planning Commission. And then slightly variations on the brand and directional signs. Audi has a very, very small brand sign on the building, which is 2.8 square feet. And then BMW and Mini have their brand and directional sign as a combo, but they each individually meet the development text. And again, directional signs meet the development text and we are requesting that the MAG Audi service sign be removed as this particular one does not meet the quality and materials requirements from the development text. And then lastly, for Subarea C, which is the newest one, which is the Jaguar Land Rover one, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved wall signs for the building itself, which meet the development text in terms of height and size. But none of the other additional signs were approved at that point. So there are allowances for brand signs and directional signs, but again, the details of them have not been approved by the commission and the applicant is aware that they have to go back to the commission and get those approved. And what is included in this comprehensive sign plan does actually not meet the text. So we've made them aware that they need to decrease the sizes and the wording on those signs. With that, as I mentioned, we had this reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and they are recommending approval with the conditions. We had noticed at the Porsche sign, there was a double, so we added an additional condition that the commission did not see. So they had five for you and then staff is requesting condition six to be included in your, in your motion tonight. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions. And Mr. Parrish is here as well for MAG.
You mentioned that the service signs are being taken down. So how's that been resolved then internally? Because when you go onto that campus, it's a little confusing. There's a lot of really neat, different car, cars and their service centers, but, so, did that impact the project in a negative way, or?
We're ultimately just asking to have the service signs, the directional ones, removed that don't meet the quality standpoint.
Okay.
If we wanted to do a more permanent-looking, more prominent material sign to indicate service areas, we could work with them to do that. But the ones that are there are really more temporary in nature.
But, but basically, I guess, my issue, or what I'm curious about, is if you're bringing your car in there for service, you can, without those service signs, you can still find where you've got to go. I mean, it's, it's sort of their own campus in a way, so.
Right, right. From a user perspective, I don't know where I'm going, but I know what car you're taking there, so.
Unfortunately, I can't afford any of those cars that you're taking there, so. So I was just curious about that, because, you know, we, these are guests coming in from New, from Arlington, Bexley, everywhere else, they have their cars serviced. And I just wanted to see that that function isn't impeded.
And I'll let Brad answer that.
You're not saying all the service directional signs are gonna go away. You're saying you're making them consistent, if I understand correctly. So they'll still be there, they'll just be, is that right?
Okay.
There was a long, drawn-out discussion at council over this matter. I think we probably went a good two hours on it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I've been there.
Any other questions?
Thank you for, Brad, Brad, thank you for undertaking this. I know that there was a lot to inventory. Thanks to staff for going through it, because they're, they're certainly, you know, this campus has been in an evolutionary process for, I don't know, 15 years or more. And thanks for taking the time to step back and make sure that it has the appearance standards every, I think everybody wanted.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the site plan for Midwest Auto Group sign packages. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Take your pick. Judy, go.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Naming of the park at Tuller Flats. Matthew?
Good evening. We have the, have Dublin's 61st Park that'll be open to the public as soon as we can put a name on it. You'll recall back in October of last year, we talked about this park and the need for it to have a name and, and the process by which we would take to make a recommendation for that name. Staff has since taken an internal poll amongst our staff members. We've taken a lot of things into consideration, some of the influences that led us to make this recommendation. You'll notice the location of this park in the Bridge Street area, it is going to be programmed by small events and, and programs, entertainment and so forth. So the location of it, easy to find, the proximity to the Tuller residency there, Tuller Flats resident community there. Also, you'll look, if you look really closely, it resembles a square. So we felt it quite telling for us to recommend the name of Tuller Square Park. There is a, a significant history of the Tuller family here in the community back in the 1800s, business family as well as a farming family as well on this property. So we felt that that was appropriate. So with that, we recommend the name be Tuller Square Park.
Any discussion from council about entertaining some different method of naming this park?
It gets excellent. Having just returned from Savannah, they've got 22 squares and each one is called something square.
Kathy?
So, question, what are you thinking about signage for the park?
Well, we will.
Square? No, I'm just-
Well, we have some work to do from the standpoint of our signage within the Bridge Street District. We've got the Riverside Crossing Park that'll be coming online here soon. We've got this park as well. We have not gone through the process of looking into a different brand of sign with design, color, and materials, but it's something that is on the forefront of us putting into place. So in the meantime, the plan is the typical park sign that you will find in any of our parks today.
Now, that might not be a bad thing for the time being, so people come to realize that is a city park.
Right.
And these park signs they see all over the place, they realize that is another city park, it's not a private park for Tuller Flats.
Yeah, I agree. I think maybe in addition to that, we have some opportunity, as we've talked a lot, a lot about creative signage in this area. Maybe we have an opportunity to, as we say, combine the traditional with the future and think about some creative signage here, too. I think there's an opportunity there. So I just put that forth, as you're thinking about signage really on both of those parks. And I'm, again, I'm not being very forthcoming with a suggestion, but I think it's an opportunity rather than to default. But in the short term, we need something, but I think we should think about that.
Is it your intention not to have any internal walkways? It's going to be all turf?
The current design is just turf. The future design is yet to be determined, but as they anticipated, there will be some kind of an iconic interactive feature there. Maybe something to have to do with storm water management of that area, and how that is portrayed, and it could be an education piece, could be an interactive water feature of some kind, and so forth. But that has just been in the preliminary design and discussion, but we haven't furthered any of those conversations. So certainly, we welcome any suggestions or direction.
I think since you're trying to go with a traditional street grid network, and with a traditional, you know, urban park, even though the architecture is more contemporary surrounding it, when you do look for those kinds of things, I think it ought to be a traditional urban grid-street-network kind of signage that goes in there. And, you know, you think of all the ones through New York, where they'll have the, you know, small archway or something that, you know, you're entering into special space. So I would just, when we get to that point, I would like to see something along those lines that treated it that way.
Anything else from council? Okay, I make a motion that we name the square-shaped park at Tuller Flats Tuller Square Park. Judy?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Staff comments. Michelle?
Two quick comments. First one is, I see that Ted Ohr is here with Crawford-Hoey tonight, and just wanted to publicly thank him and his team for bringing back our farmers market, which will start in June. Just got an update today that we'll probably have more than 50 vendors there to start off, so it'd be great, great variety, strong. And it was clear in the surveying that we did with our public that they were hoping for a Saturday market, so he's gonna, they're gonna make that happen. So appreciate that. The other note I wanted to make is tomorrow's the first day of spring, and we'll be welcoming in spring with a winter storm, which will hit us this evening, and we'll have our full snow crew onboard midnight tonight, and expecting snow and freezing rain to hit around 3:00 a.m. this morning, and some mix of that, unless it's all weather hype, continue through Wednesday afternoon. So we can expect maybe several inches of snow over the next couple days.
Yikes.
That is it, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Council Committee reports. Community Development Committee, John?
The Community Development Committee met tonight, and we had six applicants asking for grant monies. This is probably going to utilize or use up all the monies that we have for the year, so we probably won't have another application this summer. Just to get to the synopsis of it, the request we're going to be asking you to vote on is Savona needs $4,511, Tartan Ridge is looking for $3,500 to $5,000, Tartan West is looking for $5,000, The Muse at Dublin is looking for $2,522, The Villas at Corazon asked for $7,500, but we unfortunately have a limit of $5,000, so we can only allocate them $5,000. Wedgewood Glen was requesting $5,000. All the applicants, according to staff and the committee, had very interesting improvements that would improve the overall aesthetics of not only their community, but the general drive-by of the whole community. And since our staff is really overworked all the time, we're very pleased that these citizens took the initiative to come forward and take their time, hire a designer, fill out that whole body of paperwork, and come in here and try to do something to upgrade the common good of the neighborhood. So I'm requesting that you vote for these improvements, and looking for motion.
I will move, so moved.
I'll second.
Judy?
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Anything else to report, John?
Yes, the second item was, this is the update on the streetscape plans, and the committee looked at Emerald Parkway design and the city hall south to Tuller Crossing. They also looked at the West Bridge Street design from 27033 to the historic core. And just to clarify that, if that sounds confusing, that's really 161, coming off the freeway and then going down to the downtown, which is really not bound together very well with any kind of aesthetic embellishments. So we do have $200,000 that we actually voted for, and the committee is recommending to you, City Council, that we take the monies, and instead of breaking them apart for these two projects, that they felt that the 161 corridor was really probably the most important aesthetic enhancement we could do, and they're asking that those monies go towards that improvement. And if there's any discussion, or?
It needs to be done.
Yeah, it does. So is there a motion to, is there a second?
I'll second.
Judy?
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Is that it, John?
Thank you very much.
P&amp;Z, Jane?
Well, I wasn't at the, I wasn't at the last one, because we were at the retreat, so I don't really have anything to report, except I do have a request, though, for planning and zoning, and for ARB as well, after sitting on it. I would like to see more photographs, so that we can have more context pictures to show where, for instance, signs, how they display on the front, and how they look next to a building, or especially on the mags. I was not involved that much in that major, complex signage. But for someone coming on, I had absolutely, other than visiting the site, which I would do, it's very difficult, I think, without pictures for context, to see where these elements lay in the landscape or in the environment. So I know that in ARB, we requested that when I was on it, and at times they're there and at times they aren't, but I always think they're important to have context pictures. So that's all I have for P&amp;Z.
So noted. Admin Committee, Chris?
We have a couple outstanding things to do, most notably our reviews, and so I will probably be reaching out to a few of you on the best methods moving forward with that. So that'll be the next big bite at the apple that we all take.
Thank you, Chris. Finance, Michael? Public Services Committee, Christina?
Nothing yet.
Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
No, we meet tomorrow morning.
Morphy, Chris?
Mr. Shattuck was here with us this evening. He was on the nominating committee for the executive board, so thank you for being here. Thank you for the opportunity to serve on that. Appreciate that. And their meeting minutes were included in your packet, and hopefully you had a few moments to take a look at that. But I think there's just some really important things going on there with the Hyperloop feasibility study that would likely pass through, pass through our city on its way to Chicago. So interesting things to come.
Thanks, Chris. Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to report, thank you.
U.S. 33 Innovation Corridor?
We meet April 13th.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
No, I think Dave did a great job with his shtick tonight, and it's all good, and that is just a great asset to our community. They really work hard. They're really good people, and they're all so positively motivated. It's just amazing to see people with that kind of energy. Many of them unpaid, many of them underpaid, do the kind of work they do for us, so thank you.
Thanks, John. Board of Education, Christina?
We have not met this month.
But I would point out, before we have another council meeting?
Oh, boy.
We will have our dodgeball tournament.
Oh, gosh.
Our team, Michael, we're going to play in a dodgeball tournament.
Look out for fourth graders.
Everybody except for Mike, who was the first one to volunteer and the first one to back out.
I dodged it.
What?
He dodged, oh my god.
Hey, Mike, what are you doing on August, or on April the 6th?
April 6th.
How quick are you getting out of the way of that? Okay.
We do not yet have a location, because I haven't asked the question, but I'll, it needs a 7th. I will get around that location at our next council meeting, I'll report.
It's at Scioto High School.
Scioto High School, all right.
It is at Scioto High.
Scioto High School.
And what time is it?
I believe it starts at 6:30.
6:30.
It's in the morning.
6:30.
And where are our 32 required practices?
Yeah.
Working on that. I'll get a schedule around here, don't worry. I told Doc O'Leary, we'll be in the locker room before people have parked their cars.
6:30.
I believe so.
Maybe we can get Urban to be our number 7.
We better.
It's for a good cause.
We better practice, guys.
It seemed like a good idea at the time, that's all I could say. Washington Township, Mr. Richter, welcome, sir. You got anything you want to add? Thank you so much for coming. Hope you get home safely in this weather. Council Roundtable, back to the end. Jane?
Well, I was privileged and to be invited to go to our wonderful neighbors in Marysville to the groundbreaking of their Memorial Hospital, that $50 million expansion. They had over 300 community members and staff there, and it was a really exciting time for them, so I'm really happy for them, so good for them. And the only other thing that I would say is I'd like to bring up for council consideration is, in the historic district, as we begin to do some things like landscaping and artwork and planters and hanging baskets and that sort of thing, I think that I would like to request that we consider that the city adhere to some of the same guidelines that our residents and businesses have to do, which is put those through the Architecture Review Board. And the reason I ask you to do that is because I've found that many times, as different staff members are suggesting certain elements that go in the historic district, there is no cohesiveness then, because different departments are suggesting things. And I think that if we have the ARB take a look at these items, like we do for the residents and the businesses, we'll have a more cohesive and a much prettier look in the historic district, so I'd ask you to consider that.
Good thought.
Thank you, Jane. Kathy?
I have a couple things, Mr. Mayor. First, Jane and myself and Christina and Chris had the opportunity to join the staff on Business Appreciation Day last Friday, and I got to tell you, that was great fun. It really was, and incredibly impressive. I got to go to IGS and Metro 5, and it's really amazing, the diversity of the businesses that we have in this community, and it was a really terrific event. So I thank the staff for inviting us and allowing us to participate, and their great work, so that was good. The second, might take a few minutes, I wanted to bring forth a request that I had from some residents for your consideration. So earlier this month, I received a petition signed by residents who live adjacent to the wooded boundaries of the property that we know as the Autumn Rose Farms. As you may recall, a rezoning and development plan for that property was presented by Polte Home and approved by P&amp;Z and council last year. I have an image I'm going to bring up here, and Nick brought me this, we'll see if I can do it. Look, nope, whoops, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get there, whoops, I'm gonna go to this one first. So here's a overview of that piece of property. It's a total of roughly 47 acres, and of that, and you'll see that in the green portion here, a very nice 21 acres, or very large, presented that, will be preserved for park and open space for the community, and was dedicated to the city of Dublin. And the remaining acreage will be single-family homes developed by Polte Homes. Couple things, that 2,100 acres, if you look at that, of that, about, 2,100, listen to me, 21, yeah, most of that, or 16-plus of that parkland, is going to be passive parkland. It's mature, and it's quite densely wooded. And based on conversations that I've had with city staff, there's really no plans to change that composition. They're going to leave it a wooded area, they're not going to thin it or clear it, but it will, again, be passive, more open space than parkland. There's a shared youth path system that's going to be installed, but it's going to be in the open space areas, and not really part of that wooded area. There is a portion of this, and I drew it with my great artistic skills on my surface today, there's a portion of this property that has fencing around it. As a matter of fact, most of this property has fencing around it, and very much so around the perimeter of this heavily wooded area that I outlined here. That fence was installed some time ago by the previous owner, based on aerial views that the city's been able to find. It's been there since around 2004. So under the landscaping section of the final development plan that was approved, the fencing along this parkland that has been dedicated to the city is planned to be removed during Phase 1 of the project development plan. All of the residents, and I have a signed petition here, 16 of them that are along this border area here, have asked that we reconsider this, and we look at thinking about keeping that fence intact. The residents stated in their petition that the fence was in place when they bought these homes, and the fence serves an important function, that being, you know, a protective barrier, if you will, from this wooded area, protecting pets, and more importantly, their children. I wanted to share a few images of that, so you get a sense of that, and I don't think I necessarily have them in the right order here, so we're going to see. So this is one picture of that fence, which is in pretty good shape, and I'll show you a little better picture of it, but in this, you can see the fence and the woods that are behind it. This is a more broad view of that, and you see that it separates the family homes from this wooded area. This is another picture just over the fence, so you can see what, when we say densely wooded, what we're talking about here. And it, you know, it's mature, it hasn't really been cleared for a while, and here's some examples of kind of what it looks like. And that's what it could look like, I guess. There you go.
Kathy, can you go back to the first picture?
You betcha.
Just really quickly, on this picture, does the fence currently, right now, come from Mill Springs Drive all the way to Highland Crowe?
Yes, well, I'm gonna get my little pointer here. So we're talking about from here all the way up? Is that what you're asking? Yes.
Yeah. So are they asking to keep that portion of the fence up, too, like the whole thing, or just the part you've outlined?
Just the part here. These will separate two residential homes, and so by tradition, the residential homes, those fences will be removed. The issue here is, as I tried to illustrate in the picture, is that this is really a barrier between this woods and the home, so. So again, it looks like the fence is in pretty good shape. Matt and his team have gone out and looked at this, and I'm looking for a nod here, that he's agreeing that they're in pretty good shape. I asked Matt if he could estimate what would be a useful life of a fence that was similar to this, similar composition, similar construction, and staff's best guess is roughly 20 years, give or take. So given the situation and the requests from all of the residents, it seems to me that we should reconsider removing that fence as part of this decision. The city has shared that the original rationale for the language in the plan to remove the fence is really sort of twofold. The first was to ensure that we create access to parklands for our residents, and of course, that makes perfect sense, that we want to be able to do that. And as the pictures show, you know, if you walk along this stretch here, it's not likely that this is going to be much of an access to a park path or to one of the parks that currently exists there. So I don't think keeping the fence intact really violates an access requirement. I just don't think that really is a rationale. The other rationale for removing this fence was certainly maintenance cost. None of us wants to create a financial burden for the city. The fence is in good shape, as we've looked at, and has certainly some good years left on it. It's logical to me that we should think about leaving the fence here, and at the time that it is no longer viable and has reached its end of its useful life, then the city could take it down. I've asked to, planning staff, to confirm that at some point in the future, the residents in this area do have the ability to put a fence up if they wanted to at some future point, and I've been told that the answer to that is yes. So at some point in the future, when the useful life of this fence is no longer, if a homeowner wanted to do it, they could put up a fence. So again, with that, the process would be for us, and I'll stop and get comments certainly from the group here, but if it's the desire of the group, then what we would have to do is amend the final development plan and send a recommendation to planning and zoning to do so. So comments, thoughts?
No, it sounds like a real logical idea, really, to leave it up. Since it's in good shape, I noticed it's got wire on it, running, which will probably keep the deer either in or out, and out of people's backyards, or out of their gardens. So I don't see any reason to really take it down. I think it's a positive amenity to the project.
I agree. I think that if we have all the neighbors, every one of them that border it, would want that. Now, if there were access, there's always, you could take one section down if you wanted to get through, if there was. to get through, if there was no way to get around, I'd be up for that. And I'm sure that the neighbors would understand that if it needed to be painted, they could get a group of them together if they want the fence, but I think it's a good idea to keep it up.
The other idea is that once it's done with its usefulness, we're not responsible for painting it or printing it back up, it gets taken down. And I think...
And I think that's important, that when it's sort of the end of its life, the end of its natural life, if it starts to fall down, and you go, we gotta take it down. We're not saying that we have an obligation to replace it and maintain it. And also, if a big old tree falls and takes a third of it down, I think at that point, if aesthetically, it only makes sense to take it down at that point, then I think we have to do the right thing. And I also think it's important that we're, so I'm supportive of the levitating fence, but I think it's important that we're not passing judgment on a future access point. If it comes to be that one of these neighborhoods says, we gotta have access, we're not, we don't want someone to say, well, no, city council said there was no access, that's why they have a fence there.
Yeah.
That's not what we're saying. We're just saying, there is a fence there now, and barring anything, any circumstances changing, for me at least, I don't see a reason to take it down unless something changes.
So the request, though, is, we're not making a decision on it today, we're sending it back to planning and zoning for their recommendation. That's the request for today.
With direction, and that's what we want them to do.
I understand, and I think that makes perfect sense.
Right. The motion would be to direct staff to prepare an application for planning and zoning, consistent with the comments and the consensus of council here tonight.
Because it would be important if somebody bought one of those houses in 15 years and the fence is there, and the next year it comes down, and they say, wait a minute, what happened to my fence? It would then be tied to the zoning on the property, right? So they were unnoticed that...
Right. There'd be a process and a public record of what has occurred.
Okay.
I'm in favor, I think that's a great idea. Go ahead.
Great. So again, then we need to make a motion, then, to ask city staff to prepare an application with a recommendation to amend the final development plan, consistent with the conversation that we've had here.
I'll second.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Matthew, is there any expectation that there might be walkways through those woods at some point in the future? Probably not. Okay. It doesn't appear that there's any easements, is there? Really, going from the street back into that forest, from that streetscape, is there? There's no easement, there doesn't appear that there's any easements or right-of-ways for us to build a path back into there.
Thad, can we make the 16 homeowners that signed up that petition, for lack of a better word, part of the record for planning and zoning, so that their names are associated with this?
Yeah, certainly. I believe that could be at least placed into the staff.
And I will report that way.
If we can do that, that'd be great. And, I mean, they could even be right into the record tonight if you wanted, but at the very least, could be included in staff report.
Okay. Kathy, anything else? You said a few things, I think.
I just said two, and that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
That's it, okay. Jonathan?
It's coming back up, that the tournament is rapidly approaching, and there was quite a bit of discussion in that area about the safety of people and the 35 mile per hour speed limit going down Muirfield Drive. And I don't know, chief, or the engineering department, if we can do something to reduce that, because, you know, we only have one lane left, and sometimes people are drinking, and it's a pretty short, it's a pretty narrow corridor for them coming off the course, getting in their cars and swinging their cars back around, because we allow parking in the medium strip. So the discussion came back up in that neighborhood, that, you know, should we or could we, or are we allowed to reduce the speed limit between Glick Road and Brand Road on Muirfield during tournament time or tournament hours to 25 instead of 35, just for the safety of actually the visitors and pedestrians who start running up and down that bicycle trail? I mean, is that even possible legally, to do a temporary speed limit change, or...
I'd have to talk to engineering. I believe, because it's the tournament time, and we do adjust the laws in Muirfield through that permit, I have to talk to legal and engineering, but normally, speed limits can only be adjusted through approval after a petition to the Department of Transportation, the director has to approve it, and it's based on warrants and all that kind of thing. So you can't just artificially reduce a speed limit. So we'll look at that, specific to that tournament time, but I guess the answer is, I don't know the answer. So we'll look for it and get back to you.
Good answer.
And then, Michelle, a question at the retreat, we came up with, all of us came up with suggestions, and I understand that, are those coming back to councils for approval? I mean, a lot of them were approved right there by a vote. So where are we at in that? I thought I'd see maybe in this packet.
You'll see in your next packet, a draft report for council's review. We'll put it in that packet and see if there's any comments that come back from council, and then we'll bring it back at the next, that following meeting for adoption.
Okay. And Claudia, Matt, Sean, and the staff, just want to thank you for the work you did with the Community Development Committee and all the grants, and plowing your way through that. And I'm sure we're gonna overwork you, Sean, because there's a lot of stuff coming up. So we're on a move to try to not sub out a lot of the stuff to landscape architecture firms, but internally, use our own people for a lot of these projects. Okay, thank you.
Good. Michael?
Yeah, I just jogged my memory that those bonds are coming up on DAC in 2020, which is just a couple years away. I'd like to understand or have a look at, what's the expectation of both DAC and city and this council in terms of what happens to that funding? Because there's significant, if I did the math right, it's $150,000, $200,000 a year going into satisfy the bond debt. What's the expectation, what will happen with that money? And I don't need an answer right now, you can get back to us.
I was just gonna say, we are tentatively planning to bring to council maybe a work session or a finance committee meeting between capital budget and operating budget, just a comprehensive discussion about the hotel motel tax fund, because there are a lot of commitments, and we need to understand...
Right.
...how all these pieces fit together, and the funding, the availability of funds. So we will make sure that that's included in our discussion.
And we made some significant changes last year as well, in terms of what we're providing to convention visitor bureau as well, so, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Christina?
Thanks. So, again, Business Appreciation Day was fun. I enjoy, I've enjoyed it every year. My favorite thing to do is to give stuff away, so I really enjoyed it. Excuse me, last week, I had the privilege of working with Michelle and attending the Aging in Place Summit that was over at Ohio University. It was 9 to 12, and it was, I mean, there were some phenomenal people. There were 50 people there?
Yeah, I think we invited 42, and 50 people showed up.
Yeah.
Overwhelming response.
It was amazing, and, you know, Christine Nardeckia and Dr. Leidy and Michelle did a phenomenal job at hosting and facilitating and presenting. We really spent the bulk of the time thinking about some visioning questions, and talking through what those would be, and it was really about, what does it all look like in 2025, no hold barred, you know, dream away? I mean, we had discussions about solar sidewalks, and which exist apparently today. And it was, well, we had Steve there from Fuse, so it was a highly technical conversation with him there, but it was wonderful. And I think that, you know, part of Christine's task is to be pulling all of that stuff together with staff to really summarize it and bring to the table the things that were discussed and how we can partner with each other. We had people from different areas of the state and different counties as well. It was really a phenomenal experience, and I cannot believe how passionate these folks are about aging in place and creating a community for our most experienced citizens, that's what I like to call them, you know, to really be able to live and enjoy this city the way that they want to live and enjoy this city. And then, and we've really discovered that a lot of these issues are not just about our most experienced citizens, they are things that a lot of different age groups can really benefit from across the board. So it was a phenomenal conversation, so thank you again, Michelle, for helping to put it together. And I didn't know if you wanted to make any comments about it as well, but I wanted to...
Just a couple quick comments. This one was focused on health, wellness, and social services, so it was all those agencies from Dublin and central Ohio and from other parts of the state that came together for this conversation. And based on council's feedback during retreat, we are looking at, what are the other groups and community conversations that we want to have? And we'll be putting that together and starting to reach out to the community, and we'll make sure all of council is aware of any of those meetings that may be taking place.
And so we kind of joke a little bit about the Alexa commercial, but really, a lot of the conversation was around how technology can help us in this regard. So thank you again, it was a wonderful conversation.
That it? Thanks, Christine. Chris?
I just have one question. In reviewing the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes of their January 4th meeting on page 7 of 12, it talks about a, Mr. Kimbrel is speaking, and he indicates that they intend to clear selective views, which he pointed out to the board and commission in the planter areas, he said they were proposing mixed. It referenced, I think, that they were going to be clearing some views to the river, and I would like, before a chainsaw starts or anything, I think that that is probably a discussion that we need to have, because it will be virtually impossible for us to grow additional trees down into that bedrock. So I want to, I want to look in your eyes, and I want you to tell me there isn't a thing coming down until we have that conversation. Wanted to make sure we had that. And then, again, thanks to my team, we were the A-team on Business Appreciation Day, I think we had a tremendous amount of fun, and I know you all did as well, too. So I got to visit OCLC in the 5555 Park Center facility, and it was really fun. So thank you for that, that opportunity. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chris. Is that it? Tomorrow morning, Nancy and I are going, is this tomorrow morning, Nancy? Am I right about my calendar? We're going to the March for Meals Kitchen Duty at Life Care Alliance for Meals on Wheels program. I think it's a good reminder, and I'm reminding everyone, it's easy to remember the people in need during the holidays and things like that, when it's more commonly talked about, but people stay hungry and need help all year round. So I'm not sure what you're gonna do, Nancy, when I'm snowed in. I guess we'll just, we'll call Michelle. Michelle, get me out of this town, so we'll see how it goes. If there's no other...
One other item. There's one other item that we didn't get a chance to cover tonight, because we ran out of time at the Community Development Committee, and that is, and Michelle, we were talking about this, the Commercial Facade Improvement Program update, and how we feel about it. I think we're backing it, from what I understand, right? This is a grant for the downtown businesses to upgrade the facades of their businesses. Do you need a motion that, what are you really looking for? What would you like us to do?
Kyle, I just talked to him before the meeting started, and he'll be back for the April 9th meeting, and we can put that under other.